All right, welcome everyone. We'll get started with a board meeting for tonight by standing for the. Thank you all. I'm Kerry John, Vice President of the School Board, filling in for President Reese. There are two changes, three changes. Mrs. Ray and Mrs. Frieser, Ms. Frieser excused tonight. And there are two changes. One, we've added a leave of absence for Mr. Wheeler from eight nineteen twenty-two to six thirty twenty-three. And the appointment of an intern working with Mrs. McGara from July one twenty-two to six thirty twenty. Any questions? All in favor? Next up, we have under recognition presentation. We have a recognition of the Seneca Intermediate Odyssey of the Mind Renatra Fushka Award winners. So with that, I would like to introduce our Odyssey of the Mind coaches, Coach Jenna McClure and Coach Brenda Windus. I would like our Omer's to stand up. Amelia, Greg, Andrew, Sophia, Nora, Drew, and Kylie is joining us from Tennessee at the World Force Championships. We have a very brief recognition presentation and then after the students were victorious in New York State and then in the world finals, I have a conversation with Mrs. Ray and she prompted we ought to do something special for these kids. And so we have a token of appreciation for the kids and I'll turn it over to Levi to cue the video.
All right. Our next four national team awards goes to a long-term team from problem three, class six, state year, the news production division two. And that team is the team from Sayre Legacy School from New York, New York. Come on down.
They're the one on three.
Feature key, a huge risk as most developers choose minor keys and chords for sad moments. But Leslie made this work by melding the risky key with softer dynamics and flawless guitar technique. We witnessed nothing more emotional than this performance. The most impressive aspect is not that this music was composed by a middle school student, but that it was composed by a middle school student in just four days. However, a song is nothing without performance to bring it to life. This creative production was truly a team effort. We'll see these kids on Broadway. Great job, team.
Next one actually goes to a team from problem four, a Christmas structure division two. This team is Seneca Intermediate School from Salamaka, New York.
That was a personal thing.
The team built a magnificent beehive in a tree that showed ambitious design and workmanship. The sheer size and multiple functions were tricky to implement and the visual details were stunning. It also functioned as a working scale weighing pollen from the bees and the nuts from the squirrels. It showed risk-taking because it had to be assembled once time started. There was also an inventive moth costume whose wings floated with no apparent movement by the team member thanks to the creative engineering by the team. The various materials used throughout the performance was inventive and convincing. Even the membership sign captured the judges' attention. But upon closer inspection, it was made out of tongue depressors and had a motor that made it look like there were bees magically floating around it. Congratulations, team.
The kids all were walking around with T-shirts on and they saw all the flag that the other championship teams had. So Mrs. Ray and I got together with Levi and the coaches and so we have the student's name on them and then Odyssey of the Mind World Finals twenty twenty-two for our students. Sophia. Greg. Drew, extra pockets for your hands. Amelia. Mrs. Windus. And Coach McClure. These are for twenty twenty-two.
It's a room for.
These are given with the expectation that there are additional numbers added to that. We're expecting great things from you for the remainder of your career as Warriors. And we have one for Kylie also.
And we have a couple of quick thank yous too. It was really an amazing experience and I'm so glad that we have so many here. So they have a couple of thank yous, Andrew.
Thank you to the Board of Education for supporting Odyssey of the Mind this year. Our trip to world finals was unbelievable. It was the first time most of us had flown on a plane. We met people from all over New York, the United States, and around the world. Thank you for the opportunity to participate in this experience. We look forward to doing this again.
I would like to say a very special thank you to Mr. Brightenstein. We thank you for your support and help at Worlds and supporting Odyssey of the Mind through your tenure in Salamaka. There's a saying, once an Omar, always an Omar. Even though your time is wrapping up at Salamaka, you'll always be in Omar. So we would like to present you with the always an Omar pin.
Now I need myself to be prop truck driver emeritus.
We're gonna hold you to it.
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Awesome. Good job, guys. All right. Next, we have the school safety and real.
Good evening. Let's see. So one of our current numbers with regard to our COVID nineteen situations. No students are on isolation or quarantined at the moment. One employee is on isolation, but will return tomorrow. Depending upon where we get our reports from, there are between one hundred and thirty-six to one hundred and sixty-three active cases in Cataract County. That is lower than it has been in a very, very long time. As a reminder, two hundred cases per hundred thousand over a seven-day period is considered low. Our region is currently at eighty-nine over the past seven days, so we are in a low transmission rate. Thank you. Right to the point.
All right. Any questions on that? Let's move on to that presentation, the Board's Code of Conduct twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. So earlier in the spring, I had tasked our assistant principals to hold some forums and information sessions with the community and students about our code of conduct. So I'd like to introduce Mrs. McGara, Mr. Wong, Mrs. Barry, and Mrs. Oaks. We're gonna walk us through some of the highlights of the recommended changes.
Although there's four of us, we'll be quick and sweet as well. So we're just introducing the process. We did have a public forum, May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, and doing this historically, code of conduct isn't always the most exciting thing, doesn't have the biggest turnout, so we talked about ways of trying to get more input. We worked with Levi, digital feedback, forum share, email, and social media. We also had student leaders at the Seneca Intermediate and High School Buildings. Came together with final recommendations and then we're here to present to the board after submitting to Mr. Brightenstein and talking about some of these changes. Areas for recommendation, dress code, cellphone and electronic devices, and then the safety morals and health of the district. With that, I'm gonna give it to Mrs. McGara.
Hopefully you can hear me. Thank you for allowing me to review our code of conduct again. I really do appreciate it. So what you're seeing up here on the board is we've got some white lettering. And we did go through each of those paragraphs of the different sections and the changes we've actually put into brand. So if you're looking at this, the school district is responsible for seeking that student attire does not interfere with the health and safety of any student. And if we're trying to look at this more as a holistic thing, and the code of conduct being a district code of conduct, it should just be for the kids. We should be modeling, adults should be as well. So we simply just changed the word student to individual, so that's Italian, any individual who is in the building. The students really had a laugh and they, but they did take it very seriously at the same time. That makes a good sense. Where if you look at the next one, activity-specific shoes, footwear requirements are permitted, for example, athletic footwear for PE. And then at some point along the line, tap shoes for theater and dance was included in the code of conduct. And they said, if we're looking at our school, that really doesn't fit in there because we don't have theater and dance. Not to say it couldn't be added another time. So like I said, that's just one of the things that the students had brought up, so we did decide to eliminate that. The next bullet popped up over the last couple of years. And we've had many individuals question, myself even, adults and students, what the word appropriation means. What says culturally offensive appropriation holding her costumes? So each one of us actually looked that word up and said, hmm. I think it means this, and someone goes, no, I think it means that, and it's like, okay, I think we all have a good idea, but it's, if we're writing a code of conduct for the staff and the students and the families and the community to understand, how can we make this more relatable and more understandable? So in talking with the student leaders that we had at the high school meeting and a couple of our teachers, we thought maybe we should just use the word offensive and use the word culturally offensive holding her costumes. It was kind of a debate, how do we do this? So we thought we'd bring it here, what better place to see if there's a question or if there's something somebody here may be able to help us with. Should we do the defensive? That's more of a broad term. Or not. So that's why we're here with that. Puts and hats are not to be worn on heads in the building. And that we had, originally, it is at the discretion of the building principal as to whether hats show or ball caps may be worn by the school body, the student bodies, sorry. But we just decided just to take it out. We need to set a standard or rule, if it's a district, it's gotta be followed all the way up. Not to say, which I think it is in the code of conduct to state that if there is a spirit day or something special, obviously that's when everybody will have the permission to wear a hat. Are there any questions on any of that?
Where is it, student or the top?
Oh, see, how many times can we look at it? So we can check if we can. Thank you for looking at that. We can change that. Okay. So the next topic that was brought up was cell phones and electronics. And specifically in the public forum that we did, the link that went out via Facebook to students and staff, the community. One of the things that came up a lot was consistency, making sure that what is the policy, are we being consistent with it? Which is kind of how the hats and hood policy came. What's the rule? You know, everybody's ready to follow the rule, everybody's ready to enforce it, but we don't have clear guidelines specifically on what it is. So cell phones was another topic that a lot of people made comments on specifically related to what is the rule? What's the expectation? What are we expected to hold students to? The only thing that was really indicated in the code of conduct was the misuse section. So we thought, I know at Seneca, there was a period of time where cell phones kind of became an issue. And so we went to every single classroom. We said they're no longer allowed in cafeteria. And I know the high schools, something similar right after February break. So we thought it was really important that there was something clearly outlined in the code of conduct that what students were allowed to do. So this is what was proposed as being added. So student may possess and use a cellphone or other personal electronic device on school property at after-school activities and as a related function, provided that during school hours it remains off and put away. Possession of electronic device by a student is privileged, which may be revoked for violation of the code of conduct, which is then later relayed in the misuse section. Violations may result in the confiscation of the electronic device and/or other disciplinary actions. And then the district is not responsible for theft, loss, or damage to an electronic device or other electronic device brought onto school property. So with that, in that paragraph, we made a lot of mention of electronic device. So instead of using the word cellphone, we want to make sure that we're encompassing everything that could be utilized in this capacity. So added to the definition section in the code of conduct, we wanted to make sure that we clearly outlined what electronic device means. So that could be whether it's a school-issue device or a personal device, which is a portable internet accessing device that can use to transmit communication by voice, written characters, words, images, share information, record sound, process words, and/or capture images, such as, but not limited to, laptop, tablet, smartphone, cellphone, personal digital, or e-readers. We wanted to make sure we included kind of everything in that capacity. And then there was another bullet point in the misuse section that was specifically talking about that no person shall use a device capable of taking pictures, video, or audio recordings in any locker room or restroom. And with the uptick in TikTok and social media and all of those things, we really felt that that was very confining and we needed to broaden that to make sure that we are including that in all areas of the school. So unless permission is granted, taking pictures, videos, or audio recordings with any electronic device prohibited, maybe in violation of privacy. If a launch could do that, that would be.
So it's a portable internet accessing device.
Such as, but not limited to. Right.
I mean, that depends, there's.
By the time school starts in the fall, there's gonna be something else that Apple comes out with. Any questions on cell phones? I heard that, I think.
Yeah.
So did I see it here five or four?
There, I think that whenever we get to the code, we think, okay, ninety-nine percent of the students. And then there will be instances where with the last bullet there, unless permission is granted by a staff member taking pictures. That may be something that we want to take a look at because I may say it's okay in my local class, but I go to the next period and the biology teacher says, no, it's not permitted. I think we just may want to tighten that up a little bit, that it should be, you know, clear who can and can't grant permission for it, because I know in media classes, still, as students around all the time, Levi technically five minutes ago may have been violating the code of conduct because he was taking video images. So there are already instances where it's completely appropriate. And then instances where an individual, I'm thinking of a student with a broken leg, who may need notes taken in class and it's just easier to turn the corner. So those are isolated instances, not the general form. Okay.
Okay, so last section, we received some feedback around and some recommendations. You can see the white print that's on the screen. That was language that was already in the code of conduct. So the red was the areas that we had some recommendations on. So you can see that we've included, we've tried to encompass all nicotine products, because we know that those are quickly evolving. And then changing the language from marijuana to cannabis, as that has also surfaced at a recent board meeting. And then also adding in THC products, including edibles. So just those tweaks within this section.
And also, that's an area that'll be tweaked yearly as weekly new items are being thrown out. And we're finding that we're learning about new things constantly.
Just thank you for your time. It's an annual event, so we'll see you next year. The plan would be for the board to adopt this on the reword meeting and then we'll. It's tonight, okay? All right, were there any other questions on the presentation? All right, now let's move on to the policy and procedure and the year summary. Yes, annually, with our revised IPP process, there is a notation, there'll be a summary. So I'd like to present some verbal information. This will go into the minutes so that it's formalized. The Indian Policy and Procedure document, again, Indian is a federal statute. We refer to it predominantly as indigenous policy, program, but the statutes refer to it in the form, not the letter, indigenous. Our document was approved in July twenty twenty-one and again in January of twenty twenty-two, a little bit later than we normally have done it. But with COVID and the holidays, we did approve it a little bit later than normal. But we approve it twice annually, once at the reword meeting and then once sometime after the fall conference in Washington DC, where sometimes changes occur and then prior to the actual application being submitted to the United States Department of Education. Both of those copies of the approvals went to the president's office at the Seneca Nation, generally within a week of the meeting occurring. So I thank Jenna for properly delivering that. We have not had a change to the document in probably a good year or so, so it's likely that there'll be some revisions after the fall conference. But we'll wait and see what the department that recommends this fall. The Indigenous Education Committee is one of our main platforms for gathering and securing information from parents. Formal meetings like the Board of Education meeting, the Title VI Parent Advisory Committee, Finance Committee, or other publicly held meetings are also. And you specifically, requests for information or requests for clarification come from the Indigenous Education Committee for the Board of Education, predominantly. The IEC met in September, October, we did have a cancellation. I'm sorry, we met in September, October, November, December, January, we had a cancellation in February due to COVID. And then we met in March, we skipped April because of the spring recess. Then we had a meeting in May, we're trying like crazy to get a meeting before the end of this year, because there's a couple dangling issues. I'm not sure when to get that meeting scheduled. On all of those meetings, the Indigenous Policy and Procedure document was discussed with the exception of the November tenth meeting. And simply because of some scheduling, we pushed that information. So generally speaking, IPP is discussed at every IEC meeting, okay? We had four formal parent communications, tons of informal conversations. But the way the plan is written is that if there's a formal request, then that is followed up with action and response and writing. So we had four of those requests this year. One dealt with a COVID and a simultaneous transportation issue about skiing on the bus. I want to thank Mrs. Ray and Mr. Early for helping to facilitate a conference with a parent on that. And we did follow up and writing some of the changes. And that did drive us to add some additional routing and some additional bus drivers to try to mitigate the congestion on the group route. We had a parent inquiry about ski club and discounts. We did have multiple conversations with multiple parents in Holiday Valley. And we ended up providing a written document to anyone that was in ski club that basically said ski club was under our umbrella. I don't know if you know a different definition, but we ensured them that this is what it meant. And we had just changed some of the language on our end. And that was to afford those students and families an opportunity to get some additional discounts. We had a parent inquiry to dedicate, I'm sorry, students and parent inquiry, mostly students, with the help of some parents to dedicate the Prospect Library in honor of Cindy Moore, a long-time teacher. The dedication occurred last week and I did follow up with the students. There was a lovely article in Salamaka Press. And then there was a request that came through Title VI Parent Advisory Committee to look at the meeting timeframe. So we are basically moving that forward. I did have some conversations with NAFIS, National Association of Federally Impacted Schools, and the National Indigenous Impacted Schools Association. So NAFIS and EISA are two entities that we work with to help us craft our IPP document. And based on a conversation with them, they suggested that we should change the schedule that meets our requirements. And then when we finalize that, then if we feel we need to consult that with them and then adjust the IPP document. So my recommendation to the board and to the meeting would be, let's wait and see what they say if there's other changes to the document in September. But basically, I'm suggesting we're free to change the meeting dates as long as we advertise those. And then before we submit to the faculty program for the department, that we should finalize it sometime, you know. Every time we change the IPP, we have a public meeting, we discuss it, we take input. And then when the copy is finalized by board approval, then a copy goes to the president's office and then a copy goes to the department that Washington. And basically, the IPP document will be reapproved at the reword meeting on July twelfth, as it seems. Okay, and that is the formal IPP summary for the year. Okay, any questions? All right, let's move on to the invitations. Do we have any phone invitations?
We have Amber Ling, if I pronounced that right, Amber Ling, has requested to speak regarding page twelve program. So I have concern about how the code of conduct is enforced by the teachers, the aides, and administration, and its impact on the students' instructional time. I have a child in community school and the process of how the code of conduct is enforced seems very subjective. And how to make it more objective and transparent to possible in that process? Any practices for eliminating those subjective practices? And then considerations for like youth students or, or typical students or differently abled students? Because if they have exceptions to their five oh four IEP, it's up to them to self-educate and educate for themselves and give the teachers or administrators, and they might not have the ability to do so kind of in the moment. And, you know, in general, if there's, you know, an infection or breach of code of conduct, a student is sent to an office, in general, they miss a whole period of class. And then potentially they're marked tardy, which results kind of in more disciplinary action, detention. And then if you have too many detentions, then that leads to suspensions. And it creates more work for teachers, tutors, five oh fours, administration, parents, and students. And the students, it kind of, you know, creates almost a resentment toward that student, you know? And so I'm kind of wondering, you know, and there's no accountability for that process. A student can be suspended for school and it takes thirty days to go through an appeal. Meanwhile, they missed, you know, an extended period of time in school and even more instructional time. And so, you know, basically, my, my biggest concern is how that code of conduct is being enforced, the transparency in that process. the transparency in that process, to make it more objective versus subjective, and to maximize that student's job to time.
Thank you, Consilane, for bringing that forward. I would address a couple of your points. And our goal is for it to obviously be fair and equitable. And you mentioned neurotypical students and being advocates. So I brought this book out and Mr. Preesi is right in front of you as our director of special ed. So he's a great advocate. If you haven't met him yet, I'm sure he's going to reach out to you to talk about some of that. And what we'll do is we'll, can I inquire, just not grade level, but what building are you most concerned about?
The high school zone, when I have.
Okay, all right. So what I will ask is, I'll ask Mr. Seaburn and Mrs. McGarrett to reach out to you, check out some specifics. So we don't get into specifics tonight. But those are all great points and you definitely want to maximize instruction with students in September. Now that you're pretty much over except exams, but it's a great launching point to have some initial conversations to make sure, A, the child will need, whether it's temporary or more long lasting because of their unique circumstances, that they have the supports they need. And B, if they do have needs, who can they go to, A, to make sure that that disruption isn't impacting instruction? Thanks for coming forward, appreciate it. All right, and then the other second part of that is Title VI Parent Advisory Committee. I don't think we have anyone here other than myself. Just FYI, we had another election just this past week, three new members. We had other members who did step down, a couple of new members did step up and run for election. We'll be certifying those elections in the next Title VI meeting. Again, Title VI is open. Don't know if we're on Title VI, stop in. Isn't this generous? It's all about helping the kids. That's it for Title VI. Central Office. What do you got, Garrett?
Uh, well, one thing I, I think is really cool that I shared with the finance committee earlier today. I sit on the board for my class, which is New York Cooperative Liquid Asset Fund. And it's the fund that we put in our money into. The only reason I'm on the board is because we put our money into it. It wasn't that I was on the board and then I said, hey, put money in here, just so everyone's clear. But we reached for the school districts, fire districts, and city municipalities throughout New York State that participate in this fund, we reached over $5 billion in assets today, which is amazing. When probably 10, 15 years ago, it was less than $100. So I think that's really cool for us. What, what's it mean for the district? It means that we're earning much greater interest than we have been in the past, especially with the changes in the interest rates, as well as the increase in the fund itself, leads us to getting greater returns on our assets. Secondly, we are working on some, it's an item called Time Peace for some of the students that are using electronic time clocks instead of paper time sheets, which we're all looking forward to. This has much less work on the other end when all the time sheets have come in. For instance, last week's payroll processing was literally, it's like a foot high of paperwork. So using a time clock will alleviate a lot of work, a lot of manual work I mean. So we're starting out with the custodians moving to food service and then we moved to transportation. So that's one of the problems. So a lot of people need those. From a food service standpoint, we had our audits with, or our health inspections a couple of weeks ago, and those are above 100%. One minor issue was the knife rack didn't come off the wall to be cleaned. And that was just because our screws were too tight and they couldn't take it off at that point. So that's something. We had a DOT audit on buses and 100% compliance with buses. And we'll go on to close out this year and start next year all within the next couple of days and meet all the deadlines.
That's boned it? So do you want to go to the budget presentation again?
No, I've scaled three times enough.
All right. Just another thanks to our teachers and staff for a great year. Once again, we have an awful lot happening this summer with summer school, summer enrichment programs, summer athletics, summer professional development, as well as other programming for our adults and students alike. For everyone, please just keep an eye on our Facebook page as well as our website for updates. Things are coming, being added. Very rarely do things get taken down that are scheduled. But all throughout the summer, things are being added to the programming that we have for our students and staff. So again, a wrap up of the year. Thank you very much and we're getting ready for September already. Thank you.
All right, so what's becoming customary when I'm running the meeting is I want to hear from principals. Chris, what do you got for us?
It's been a whirlwind the last couple of weeks. Graduation came up on Friday. So our class anyway, so a lot of the kids were falling together the last week, week and a half, showing up every day. Getting the last bits that comes to the wants. So their dedication is obviously huge. The parts I know, I think the teachers, they really stepped to the plate and thankful because they helped out every step of the way. That's really what that bulk's not right now.
The senior parade, senior parade. Honor starts at 5:30. We'll be heading out to Seneca Street, exit onto Wildwood. East head by Say Blatt, right? Then heading up Wildwood across the Clinton Street Bridge, down Clinton Street, Broad Street into that spot.
Couple gears. What else do you have?
We're busy getting ready for summer school. We've got it set. We're going to get the variety of the courses that these students need to take and get caught up. So when they come back in September that they're ready for the next stage, using skills. Regions, we're wrapping regions up. The next couple of days, we have just Algebra II and Physics left. I haven't seen the scores yet. They're on my computer, I just haven't looked at them. It's just that time of year, there's just things going on, and I'm just not able to. Let me think of it right now. I'll get back to you.
All right, I'll come back to you then. Vicki.
Okay, so first I just want to say thank you to all of the teachers in South Dakota. They have truly worked. I know everybody keeps saying it, but we really think about it with our heart and our system. Well, our Seneca South has worked incredibly well this year. So thank you to them, thank you to the parents for being super supportive of the children. And a big thank to, I guess, the kiddos. I mean, if you really think about it, kids have had a really challenging year, probably far worse for them last year because we're expecting them to be normal and they don't really know what normal is anymore. So I think it's been really challenging this year. So we're excited as we, you know, come to the end and we're proud of everyone. But as always, I think it's important to be reflective. And so we're having lots of conversations with the teachers and staff about things that worked really well this year and things that didn't, and what we can do better, we always want to be doing better. So we're reaching out and trying to find out how. We charged the teachers with that big end of the year celebrations for grade levels. So they're doing lots of fun activities and four, five, six, seven, things, water days, kids outside, and doing different things. So that's really fun and exciting. We did our teacher lunching today and that was fun. We had a seventh grade dance last week. That was really exciting to see the kids in a different light, maybe to see how much fun they have on their outside of the school and able to do their own superstition. Lots of people in the corner segregated and then by the end, everybody was dancing. It was really fun. Had a great year and thank you to everybody and.
Erin?
It's amazing how people in the seventh grade, we've got a dance on the local motion. Yeah, I just want to echo everything you said and I want to thank everybody here since my first year. Salamaca and it's just been awesome to have such a close knit community. So coming to get a very large district for this, it's all new to me. And it's just awesome to feel embraced and welcomed and supported through the full process. So thank you for that. We're just gearing up for summer. We've got some other way, we have workbooks going out to all of our kiddos, make sure that they have some books throughout the summer. Do that or satisfy that. Possible playgrounds, you have a, we also have a different maker card that's going out with those so that students can work on giving back to others. And with that, home is offering small home, things with your cards included. So really excited to get that. And gearing up for next year, looking at master schedules and trying to get everything ready to roll and set in place.
Go over here, boy.
I guess first I just, to read it with just saying, thank you to the teachers, the staff, custodians, bus drivers, bunch, bunch of service people, absolutely amazing year. And I don't, I don't think there's anywhere else. I haven't been too far and wide, but some angle will just then make it happen. It's amazing, the community's very supportive. And just looking forward to wrapping up and digging into some data crunching and how we can help kids be more successful next year and support teachers along the way and communicate with parents so that everyone's in the loop. Thank you.
Yeah, same. I agree with what everyone has said. I think it's been, this is my first year here as well, obviously. But it's been, it's been lovely to see how there's so much going on. And I think we're trying to revert to what the traditional end of the school year would be in elementary. And it's very busy. There's water days and field trips and, you know, so many different things going on. This where we have one put in next year and then one fit in this year as well, but we're still holding to the instruction. So there's that joy and celebration as to everything that we've accomplished this year. But we're still holding to the instruction, even though we have half days. So it's the end of the year, instruction's still taking place and there's still joy and happiness and celebration as well. So it's been a busy end of the year, but it's been lovely to see the kids and the staff just celebrating everything you've accomplished this year.
We got last but not least on the screen, Gail.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting me join via Zoom today. I'm in the middle of trying to get everything packed up and, and set. It's been a phenomenal year at Prospect. It's been a great end with all the fun splash days and field day. I did get dunked a few times along with Mr. Bridenstein and Officer Steve. I will admit to some bruising from the dunk tank, but we're recovering. But it's been just a lot of fun to be able to go back to some of those activities. What's been phenomenal is looking at our student data. Our students have really grown a lot and it's been great to see that. I've been in Salamaca for seven years now. And the things that we have been able to do as a learning community has been phenomenal. The support that we've been able to provide to students and staff has really changed lives. And I'm appreciative for all the experiences I've been able to have at the district and just appreciate everything that we are able to do that focuses on meeting student needs. I truly value the fact that I was in a district that was always student first and also supporting adults with what they needed to. So thank you for a wonderful seven years and a good end to, a good academic year too.
Thank you all, the principals, for indulging me. If I'm running the meeting, just expect it. All right, so let's move on to, oh, board message.
Ted.
Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations to all the graduates coming up on that. The 87 kids is pretty impressive. Also, thanks to all the teachers, staff, all that goes into it. Yeah, wish you guys a good summer, you guys deserve it. The irony is, I mean, working on about week four, I just wanted to thank Mark and Bob and Preesi and stuff, the learning all the acronyms and all the miscellaneous jargon that is referred to and said. I feel that I'll be into that a lot this summer while everybody else is getting relaxed a little bit. But also a lot is just another shout out to the ON team. Many years ago, I was involved in that. A lot of memories there. We never made it as far as that, got the award they did, but that'll definitely be a lasting impression for them. A good standard set for them for next year and other teams that we have.
Right?
I just want to say congrats to all the students for a successful school year. I want to wish Gail best of luck and graduates best of luck. And I'm glad I started with training. I got my 20th communion this year. Well, I have to tell you that being in this room this evening, having a board recognition, student first, that's a brilliant, it's a really strong message there. The data, everything's looking good, graduation rate's up. It's just, it's real refreshing for me personally, in a real positive environment. Hats off to all of you. It's just been a whirlwind in my second meeting, trying to learn, probably catch up to you. But anyway, congratulations, great job.
Yeah, I just want to echo what everybody said. Good job, everybody, students, staff, administrators, everybody who is involved with the education initiative. I'd like to rest for summer because I know I won't. But I really look forward to challenges that we'll face this next year and how we meet those and see how we come to an outcome, shout out to seven, three months.
I wanted to say thanks to Gail and Bob. I think this is our last board meeting with the two of you. So congratulations and thank you for all the years that you put in here. I've been on the board for seven years now and they've been here for seven years with me. So Indian era, starting in one. I think we are left in good occasions and I also thank these guys for everything they've done for us, setting us on a great path. I want to say congratulations to our seniors coming up this week. What was the number again, 87? It's awesome, it's awesome. The weather's going to be nice and hot and we're going to enjoy the graduation. But congratulations to everybody, all of our staff, we made it, another year, you know? Congratulations yourself, you all put in a great effort. The kids appreciate it, I know they do. We're not done though. For those of you who are involved in summer school, we're going to be starting right back over. These kids need it and you guys who do it, you're the ones who support them, you know? So I applaud you for that as well. Pretty much, thank you all, appreciate it. So I was really kind of anticipating with some apprehension tonight as my last board meeting. And I, before retirement, and I just, I really want to thank everyone personally. But teachers are busy with exams and kids and administrators are sometimes seemingly running around with their hair on fire. Rightly so, it's the end of the year and this is kind of what we do.
Rightly so, it's the end of the year and this is kind of what we do. It's exciting, but I just want to acknowledge that any success that I've had in the last eleven years is a direct and tangible result of the people that were warriors before me or warriors with me and certainly will be warriors after I stop working here. I'll never stop being a warrior. Interestingly enough, I've been a warrior in two districts I've worked in and the other one doesn't compare to this district. And so after serving some, and sitting in some two hundred and sixty-six board meetings, scores of concerts, and yes, there is surviving after third grade recorders, countless championships for all manners of competitions, plays, meetings, sunburns and dunk tanks, an estimated three hundred thousand miles on multiple cars, going back and forth to Albany and Iowa and other ports of call that where Salamaka students are finding themselves. I think they will tell you and Mark will understand this, the most pressing responsibility the superintendent has is snow days. And I will tell you, call them early, call them often, Bill's or not. And, and I just want to express my sincere gratitude to everyone in this room. I wish the administrators all the best. You know where to find me. I will always take your call. That goes for board members and central cabinet members and the scores of parents that I've given my phone number to. If I can help, I'm happy to. I consider myself a warrior to the very core. I graduated at Quaker, which is a whole other conversation about mascots and logos and ferocity, but I consider myself a warrior and will always do so. And I've enjoyed every single moment here, even the crazy ones, even the four AM wake up calls where I didn't have power because of the weather with a headlamp and a hotspot trying to close schools. Those are the memories that I will cherish, but more importantly, the memories of the people that made Salamaka from the board to the community members, to our staff, our parents, our students. Levi with your constant acceptance of my nonsense electronically saying, hey, can we do this or can we not do this? And I will say that TikTok has been very liberating because whenever it's erupted, it always kind of Levi or Mark or Kristen or somebody to send me a TikTok. They're like, okay, that puts things in perspective that it's all about kids and it's all about this district. So I'll end for now, or at least until graduation, and I'll just leave you with this. The quote Dr. Seuss, don't cry because it's over, smile because it happened. Thank you. Levi, can we keep Bob's cell phone number? Long heard superintendent there. It's probably out of two bathrooms. All right, so we're on to the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent. All right, second by flip. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? All right, nothing on the old business. So next up, we're in the new business. We have, I believe, the Board of Education Reorganization Meeting. We resolve that upon recommendation, the superintendent, the Board of Education Reorganization meeting, held on July twelfth, twenty twenty-two, to begin at five thirty, even in high school, large instruction. Second by Dale. Any questions? All in favor? I opposed, abstained, motion carried. Okay, so next up, we have the code of conduct and this is the heading code of conduct or what we're doing about the revision. I would suggest that the notations and edits made to substitute student per individual to approve the amended. Okay, so we resolve that upon recommendation, the superintendent, the code of conduct for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year be adopted and approved as amended. Do we have a motion? By Dale. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so next up is the memorandum of understanding. Heron's Community Action Incorporated. We resolve that upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Heron's Community Action Incorporated memorandum of work statement to come together and collaborate ever to meet needs of actress, given families effective July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, be approved and Mark either be authorized to execute the agreement be approved. Motion? Who's my dad? Second. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Okay, and the contract for the athletic trainer. We resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the athletic trainer agreement was sued in to provide athletic training services for the Salamaka City Central School District effective August first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And the superintendent be authorized to execute the agreement be approved. Motion? My nail. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Okay, item E, we are creating positions. So we resolve that upon recommendation of the superintendent and as a result of changes within the district, the following interim leadership positions be created effective July one, twenty twenty-two through December thirty, twenty twenty-two. Interim leadership, principal for elementary education, stipend five thousand. Interim leadership, Seneca PD meeting, principal stipend five thousand. Interim leadership, Prospect Elementary, principal stipend five thousand. And being resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent and as a result of changes within the district, the following positions be created effective July one, twenty twenty-two. ST English teacher, one FTE, ST social worker, one FTE. And we resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent and as a result of changes within the district, the following positions be created effective June twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. CSU audio visual teacher aid, five times, six times. Hey, do we have a motion? Motion by Dale? Is that right? Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. All right, that takes us to the personal consent agenda, personnel action. I'm going to copy Theresa to not read all of these. So do you have a motion on personnel consent agenda items? Then, ten. Motion by ten. Second by flip. Any questions? All in favor? I opposed? Abstained? And introduction of new disappointing staff. There are a couple here. Mr. Long, I, do you have, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Seaver, there's some. We'll start with Mr. Seaver.
Sure, thank you. So actually I have two, but I'm going to turn one over to Mr. McGarry just because of the relationships she's had with the one individual and the two. I'm going to introduce Jen Hawkins. Super happy to introduce her and welcome her to our Warrior family as a teacher assistant in our intervention room. Jen is a Warrior born, raised, graduated from Salamaka. Parents both taught here for pretty much ever. Her children go to school here. Pretty much ever. True Warrior family. She has multiple teaching certifications in elementary, special education, working on her business certification. And she also has a vast amount of experience in the business world and as such has a lot of experience and knowledge in the real world, math, dealing in business, which is going to play a vital role in our intervention. She's also very involved in our after-school activities and must continue hoping, advising and working with our activities. So super happy to have her aboard.
I'd like to introduce Ms. Amber Kusik up there. She's a graduate, graduated Salamaka High School. And when Mr. Seaver asked me if I wanted to introduce her, I'm like, oh yeah, I would love to do that. And then I wrote this book, like, no one wants to listen to me forever. So I said, how can I do this differently? So I looked back to when I had her, I had her in high school and the tenth grade teacher in my English honors class. And I remember when we were, she was applying for jobs in summer school, outside during summer. Like, ah, I look back at something she had asked me to write for her. So I thought I'd pull some of the information out of here that I told whoever was going to hire her about her then, but it still holds true today, which means that makes a lot of sense. Okay. So Amber is somebody who embodies the values of compassion, responsibility, commitment and hard work. Still today. She has both a positive work, work ethic in and out of the classroom, which is something that we want for a teacher here in Salamaka High School. She is someone her, who her classmates would always rely on to rally the group together to get things done. And hearing about her experiences that she's had the past few years in a different school in her seventh and eighth grade classroom and listening to her in her interview, I think that's exactly what we need. I mean, not that we don't already have it, but we're going to hire somebody. We want somebody who can do that, rally the kids together to be excited and do what, what they need to do to help them be better young men and women. Scholarship, leadership, character and service. Yes, those are standards of the National Honor Society student, which Amber was. As well as a French honor student, a math honor student and a science honor student. So I think we've got, we've got it all in Amber. She needs to maintain and encourage others, use this with the National Honor Society responsibility. I mean, once you're in the National Honor Society, you're always in the National. And she, you know, unquestionably goes above and beyond those expectations daily. For compassion for her education and values of responsibility, cooperation and hard work will only strengthen her commitment and whatever she chooses to do in life. So I'm really proud that she's decided and she's chosen to become an English teacher and, and welcome. Welcome to the high school. You're going to do well.
We have another introduction. Teacher?
Absolutely. I will try to continue my excitement as I introduce Marissa Shields. She is being hired as a reading specialist and will be working with us at Prospect Elementary for this upcoming school year. So Marissa, so this round of interviews that we had, we had the panel interviews and then backed it up with a lesson interview with students. So it was pretty rigorous to go into that within, you know, one day. But she immediately unanimously, the committee afterwards into briefing, we were just thrilled to have her. She, within the panel interviews, I mean, her passion and dedication is just evident. She oozes that and, and she, I mean, just her mindset came up, came across to us, her reflective practice. She reflected immediately on her, some of her questions. So a lot of those practices that are really hard to convey sometimes were just evident in that panel interview. And then seeing her with kids, it's one thing to be able to speak. Oh, I'm sorry. I should back up a little bit. So she's coming to us from Faulkner and has worked throughout the range of elementary education. So has worked from kindergarten all the way up to sixth grade. So really knows the scope of literacy skills from start to finish in elementary programming, but then also seeing her with kids, you can see that the application of it. So she can really execute that in her instruction with kiddos. But again, just convey her passion and excitement and just so quickly build rapport, which is difficult to do when you have a room full of adults staring at you. So we just so quickly build rapport with. He didn't make it to me, I'm sorry. But so quickly build rapport with kids and established expectations and executed a hegemony, a unique awareness lesson with beautiful. So I can't say enough about her. So welcome. We're excited to work with you.
Just to add for both Amber and Marissa, when I called superintendents, the respective school districts, their responses ranged from, no, I'm hanging up on you. You can't have them to, oh my God, you're going to love them. So when superintendents know without even knowing the name, it speaks a lot of your character within your organizations. And we're delighted to have you on our faculty staff. So congratulations. We have a couple more people to recognize that are here. Mrs. Beaver, Mrs. Barry and Mrs. Oaks, who with the approval of the positions are assuming some leadership roles. This will be a challenge and I am confident that you are all up for the challenge. Past is prologue for success. You've done remarkably well in your time here. You handled everything that Dr. Miller has thrown at you. And I'm sure that he will continue to rely and depend upon you. I think that you have great things in store and I think the buildings at Seneca and Prospect and both schools combined are really in for a treat with your leadership and congratulations and thank you for answering the call.
All right, so that gives us to. We have a transportation report on there and then we also have our event. We have, oh, we had staff luncheon today, we have staff luncheon tomorrow, Thursday. Parade is tomorrow. Last day of school is Thursday. Graduation is Friday. And then we have our reord meeting on the twelfth. So we have, we have an executive session. We have a motion to go into the executive session. By Dale? Any questions?